And I think if it's okay with the board right now because we had a little bit of discussion, if we can open it up for some comments on the agenda items on the presentation. Is that all right with everybody because we kind of skipped over that?
I actually do have a question.
Before we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just back to where we were talking about, you were going down and not really impacting to a certain level. Are you saying that we'd still offer the quality education we do with those cuts because we're able to absorb them either through lower, is it because of lower enrollment?
Not necessarily lower enrollment. You'll have some increased class size. However, the reductions would be able to go forward. The high school, you know, is an area that has a greater deal of flexibility than your elementary schools and middle school because of the natures of the schedule as well as the skill level of the students as well. The administrative team has come together, they've talked about these. Again, nobody wants to make the cuts, but we have to get our budget in position for the next couple of years, even with the difficult decisions and tasks that the board has been challenged with over the past four.
And do we know what level of increase those class sizes would be? Would they be going from, I don't know, maybe Diane had asked, but like eighteen to twenty, twenty-one, or would they go to thirty?
Let me, I believe Mr. Landry's in the back.
Class sizes of twenty-seven.
Mr. Landry, you want to come on up? He would have the more accurate information as he's dealing with schedule right now. In addition, they are trying to make sure that they look at board policy and fine tune their schedule. Just because we do not offer a course does not mean that we're not cutting it. It may not have enough course requests for it, and therefore it may have to be offered at a later time or additional year. Mr. Landry?
I guess I would ask to repeat the question.
Well, the reductions-
I was actually looking at numbers.
First of all, was it due to enrollment or because of lower enrollment, or would it be larger class sizes than Tom indicated? Kind of a combination of both, but those class sizes, how big of a class would it be? Would it be going from fifteen to twenty, or would it be going from twenty to thirty, or are we already at thirty? Would it be going beyond that?
It really is specific to department. Different departments were impacted differently. I can say, in terms of talking about facts, there were lower numbers in terms of requests. So, and I hesitate to say it this way, but it was easier to make a reduction there because the numbers as the requests were out there did not warrant creating a class.
So, this is based on actual requests for next year?
Yes.
So, we're not going to impact anyone who had requested and now have to tell them we've cut the class?
Because they're lower than seventeen? Because I know we have a policy that there has to be at least seventeen in a class?
Correct. Now, I won't, I can't say that because there is a class that will not run right now that has enough requests for it in facts. But traditionally, what has happened, the number of students who request the class in March, by the time the schedule is actually built and they have to start making decisions, those numbers don't necessarily carry through. An example is, how many students will request AP Physics and AP Chemistry? But then they'll have to make a choice for it to fit in their schedule. So, what I do is I look back historically how those have run and try and make the best guess as to, okay, twenty students may have requested a course for next year. The reality is sixteen will get in it, so that might be one that I would consider where, and if it's an elective. Unfortunately, that's one of the things I do have to consider. I work with the department supervisors as we make those decisions. Class sizes, again, it depends. Math, for whatever reason this year, the class sizes were very equitable. There weren't any of those outliers where it was thirty, thirty, thirty. They're more around the twenty-two to twenty-six range, which is a very good number educationally. And in English, the numbers are closer to thirty in some of the classes. Brit Lit, ten E, as we've kind of mapped those things out. Senior Composition, another one, very high, I say very high, closer to thirty.
Thank you.
Diane, can I just make a comment on this order and-
Make sure you have the mic.
What?
Make sure you start where you're right.
Okay. One of the things is, we do ask for priorities from the administration, and the administration tries to give priorities as to what they think will have, it's not least impact, but the less impact as you go down these things. And this is also what they're recommending. So, even though you're saying that, you know, maybe if you move the sports down, these other ones may have excess capacity, and oh, they're only increasing the classes a little bit, the administration's opinion based on this is that it would be better to go to three levels of sports than to increase those class sizes that much. So, you got to keep that in mind as well. I mean, you know, they're, they did not put that down there. And yes, we have the, we have the decision that we can do that, but you also have to realize that they must, not that I'm speaking for you guys, but they must believe that there is going to be more of an impact on the student program by cutting those academic programs than by reducing from four to three in the sports levels.
Do you agree with that?
That's what our administrative team put together.
Just because as I look at this, it's kind of goes, most of them just kind of go in order, so I wasn't sure by department. I know they're a little bit different, but like Transportation is together.
Well, they have priority numbers.
I know. I understand that. But you know what I mean? There's like High School is a whole group of them together.
That is one of the reasons, like what we said is at 1.5 million in fund balance, pretty much this was the area because as we're looking at it, we're looking at where potential excess capacity is, attrition is throughout this area, as well as the other areas that have been proposed for the past four years, time and time again. And it goes basically non-mandated program, keeping program, down to excess capacity, and then once we start getting into this area, we're starting to cut away program. That's why you saw a split like a point-three art to a point-two art, the point-six foreign language. The English originally, in one of our first drafts, was a lot higher than speaking to the administration. They really needed that, and it went down lower. So, the big thing is, is even if you made all of these reductions that we proposed to get down to 1.5, you're definitely next year, unless we have an enrollment drop, which we could potentially have. We don't have many new tools coming into the game that are going to allow us to keep the budget knife, if it's still there, away from program. Five years, you cannot run a flat budget and not, I mean, you've been very lucky to get this far without it. I mean, it's just a matter of time.
Well, but Jody's even told us, she told us that last year, that we already have had an impact on program. We already have, you know, the test score, she's already seen a result because of our cuts that we're making. So, I don't think we can say that, yeah, we can make these cuts and then next year, then we're going to suddenly affect program. We've already been affecting program for the last three years.
And by our association, we are being affected, and I think we said that regularly throughout the presentation, just like every other district is as well. So, you know, you hate to say it, you're still going, I believe, will still be the top, but the top of the mountain, the mountain has shrunk.
Well, and also, I would say, the reason Elementary is so far down is because the last couple of years, we've been just slaughtering the Elementary program. And, and we know that the class sizes are twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so in a way, if we were to shift cuts out of the high school, then I think, if we're talking about moving other things up, we might be moving up things that we have cut significantly over parent objection, over parent concern, the last couple of years. I know Elementary's education last year and perhaps the year before took significant hits, and that's why the class sizes are the size they are now. So, that's why I think the high school's bunched up, is because they've not been spared, but the previous years, we've been focusing on Elementary cuts.
It's probably skewed more. I let Jody talk about that.
Right, I was going to say, and also with the high school, as Dr. Douglas had said, you know, some of the things that have happened over the last few years is we've had less courses running. That's why I said, you know, we have more study halls that we have students placed in. We have courses that are not running every year. They're maybe running every other year to try and still give kids the opportunities, but not on an annual basis. And, you know, students have had, I'm sure some of you have seen with your own kids, not getting into all the courses that they want because there's limited offerings of those courses. Instead of where in the past, perhaps maybe we had four sections of something, we might have two of those now. So, those are some of the high school implications, but there is more flexibility to be able to do that than there is at the elementary or even the middle level because of all of the mandated requirements.
Tom, can you show what that looks like at 3.64? I know you're recommending 3.59.
Oh, 3.64 is about $25,000 more. So, it's from two, what was it, 220?
Yeah, 221.
220 to about 250. See, it's, it's like, one of the difficult things is when we're making these priorities as well, we're also making these priorities with a certain budget recommendation in mind. So, our priorities, you know, in a way, you don't take a haphazard approach to it, but if you know you need to get to here, you're positioning where hopefully doesn't, we're also in a people business. We're trying to keep it away from as many people as possible. There's some attrition and there's some excess capacity that we would prefer, I mean, if you, if you look at PE, Health and Facts, there's either excess capacity right now, but we're making the excess capacity, or there's attrition that if we could take those academics, move them down, and offer them, that would put us in a better staffing position and educational position. No different than if you did it with the freshman sports, that helps you live a fight another day. The question is, is we didn't think we would be in that range either because our goal is to develop a financial plan that moves us and gets us off this planned deficit. And that's where our frame comes from. So, that's really this discussion. Where's the frame? Are we going to come off that planned deficit? If we are not going to, that might have changed our priorities too. Not much, but up and down for some here and there.
The cutting words of fixing the program.
And you don't see it, you don't see it as being part of the program. I do. And you cut sports, you lose the kids in the freshman level, you lose them, your grades will go down anyway, regardless if the class size is two kids shorter, because sports have statistically shown to increase kids' grades, keep them in school, keep them graduating, so your test scores will go down anyway. I mean, twenty-six, twenty-seven kids doesn't panic me. I guess it does a lot of people. I never had a class less than twenty-five kids growing up. I did fine. I mean, we have to deal with what we do. Saving, sports is not the problem. Sports is not why we're in a problem, in a deficit. It's just not. It's one of the things we give to the kids. And the administration also has to protect their own. We also have to protect the kids, too. So, it's a trade-off with that. I would rather lose point-five of facts on there if I have to pick absolutely the hall monitor to go and defer the small building project, and you're, you're almost there. I mean, with that, I mean, if people want to say what they want to do, then we need to just discuss it and, and figure it out. And that's where I stand. You can either open it up or decide your budget or whatever you want to do.
But Dr. Navarro, I have to make, I have to make a comment just in response. The administration is not picking one over the other. We're, I wouldn't find it-
You're prioritizing.
I understand, but I wanted to say that the administration is protecting their own. We are not protecting our own. We are trying to protect the longevity of the entire district and every single program, whether it's sports, whether it's facts, whether it's psychology, every administrator. I even sat and talked to Jody today. There's not another person between myself and Jody that we're not heavily involved in athletics. It kills us to make any cut. I've been doing this for four years, and I'm tired of it, but I do not have the magic ball to say, I don't make a cut. And I can't say if athletics is the right cut. I can't say if taking an educational course away from one child is the right cut, but we have an issue. 1.75 million, either this year, next year, or the next year issue, a tax levy limit that we have to adhere, and a fund balance where we're saying we're supporting our own budget by 1.75. If we took care of that fund balance issue, we've got to come up with 1.75 million dollars in cuts, either this year or over the next three or four years, or revenue to support that. In a way, you're trying, we're trying to do both because we're pushing some of the maximum allowable tax levy, which the governor basically put into place and said, this is an acceptable area to be in, but above it, no. That's for the community to decide. We're trying to defend everything exactly like the board is, except for years, there's not much left to shield. That's the difficulty.
Can I suggest that we just see, you know, if, where the board stands on leaving it as is, or if people want to make a change? I'm not saying we vote on anything, but just see. I mean, it may gel the conversation if, if, I mean, as I said, I'm, I'm fine with the order the way it is. I'm not saying where I want to make the line right yet, but I'm fine with the order the way it is.
I am too. I'm willing to give on that deferred small building projects. I think it's something we should start, but I hear the majority of the board, and I'm willing to keep the list and the order that the administration presented.
Matt?
I guess I would say I would prefer to maybe see the sports go down a little bit if we could. I mean, we haven't decided where-
No.
Or what threshold, but for my questions, if it's not impacting the students, we're still going to have the course offerings, we're going to be able to take the courses. Where with the sports, you're, you're impacting, if someone doesn't make the freshman team, they're not going to play sports at all. If there's no freshman team, the people that played freshman will either go down to modified or up to JV, and that's going to impact whoever else could have made those teams.
Mike?
Direct impact on 170 students, you said, or whatever?
But yeah, somewhere around, I think my rough count on the thing was 160, 170.
Mike?
The only way I could justify moving the sports down the list is if we consider increasing the tax levy a little bit, say to 3.6 or 6.1, and get some more money back into it.
We know case.
No, I'm fine with the way the administration recommended.
Can I just ask Jody to clarify, because I'm hearing two different things. I thought I heard Matt say it does, it's not affecting who gets what classes, but I thought I heard you say certain classes aren't running.
That's true.
So, it does affect the program. There are fewer, you said maybe it's every other year or every other quarter, so-
Things that may be-
The cuts that we've made, I would assume over the last few years are all building that reality.
True, yeah, absolutely.
But also, some aren't going to run anyways because there's low enrollment.
Right, some may not run because of student requests as well. It's a combination.
Okay, well, where I'm at, well, we're kind of in between because I'm thinking more I would rather see sports go down.
Well, you've got four that said keep the list as is. I think, Mike, weren't you saying?
No.
Unless we're going to consider going higher on the tax rate.
Start talking about the formula then.
Okay, we'll do that. But I do want to open it up for public comment for a few minutes because we didn't do that after the presentation.
Do you want to wait until after we talk about the whole thing?
Not really, because I kind of want to know what people think.
So, then you're going to open it up again?
No, I'm just going to open it up now.
Okay.
Well, because there's other, I'm sure there's other things on here that people want to talk about. You know, not just sports, but-
No, I'm not talking about that. I just would think maybe open it up after we talk about what we're-
Because you might, because we might get up to the-
The percentage, the tax levy.
Yeah, because someone might be talking about number thirty-three, and we're not even talking about that.
All right, I see what you're saying.
So, that's what I'm wondering if we can wait till we kind of come up with where we're thinking of going and then open it up for the whole thing.
All right, we can do that.
Just so I can understand where the board's at. So, four people want that order, and then basically, we're not going to change the priorities, and we will decide on where we put the tax levy based on how much if we stay at the 1750 or if we increase or decrease the tax. And that's really what we're going to be talking about.
If you agree with the order, then really-
I don't agree with the order.
No, I don't.
I just want to make sure I understand where we're going from here.
But it's three that don't agree with the order, and Mike is kind of on the fence to see, he would want to put sports down if we don't do it to 3.59 and go to like 3.62. Did I hear that correctly?
Just so that you know, every-
But then you would raise a bill back in some, some additional revenue to offset the athletic, the sports program.
And I've got to also wonder if sports would be-
It wouldn't get us to the 70,000, but it would get us somewhere along the way there.
So, I think what we need to do is move on.
Okay, so, assume right now that this is in the order that it's going to be. Assume. I'm not saying it's done. And go on and look at what the tax levy, and then that would kind of figure out where these cuts are, and then that might help figure out what we're doing.
So, we have to go back to that formula page?
Right there. It's at the bottom. Right now, everything's at 3.59. It's at 220. If you change this to 3.61, I believe is what you said, Mike?
What did you say, Mike, 3.62 or 3.6?
It would garner about $12,000. Every one one-hundredth of a point is about $5,900. So, 208 at that amount of fund balance, 208 would put you here.
So, we're, so we'd have a-
You're really between, well, excuse me, just let me click on both.
Go to the Mattel, and that will tell us that we're willing to go beyond the Mattel for Mike to do.
Well, Mattel would be 3.64. That would be 190, it's roughly 192.
Okay, so, it's got there.
So, 192 would be right about here. Somewhere in there because you have to take the full cut to get there.
So, we'd save monitor.
That's at one point.
No, no, no.
No, this blue line, everything above that blue line would be reduced.
Including the blue line.
Right. Some of the positions that are attrition would probably be everything, I mean, wherever it is, we're just keeping this list for next year.
No, I understand that.
That, I mean, just so that you know.
And I've got to wonder, if the freshman sports would be 70,000 because we wouldn't be able to have all of them because-
Well, right now, we are, I mean, we already know, one sport will be cut no matter what.
Right.
So, I don't know exact, well, I can probably tell you. I think tentatively-
Uh-oh, because of-
Yeah, freshman across was cut, across the board.
That would be roughly about a $7,000 savings.
Okay.
With transportation factored in.
So, Mike, what do you think?
My recommendation is that we keep the order the way it is. I, and I'm concerned about going too close to the Mattel because if we're off on our calculations, we could have problems.
Okay, so, at this point, it's four, and then I would go back here, 3.59?
This, just so that the-
Because I think that'd still kept the same thing?
Yeah, so that the board knows, this is probably the closest we'd want to get, would you say, Judy? Within a 10 to 11,000 dollar calculation?
So, where does that go?
What would 3.5 even?
Well, let me just show, 3.62 would be about 190, 192. You said 3.5?
Yeah, yes.
3.5 would be about 273, which 273 would put us right about to here.
Include the facts.
I wouldn't do it. I would just go with a 3.59 if we have to, I guess there is four that wants to keep the order.
I like the 3.59.
I like the 3.59, and you're up to at least saving everything but one, two, and three.
We'd make the 3.59.
If you do the 3.59, you're saving everything but one, two, and three.
3.59, say about 222 or 223.
You probably have to get rid of the 0.5.
What if we did the point-two PE instead of the health? That would get us to about 220.
In other words, change that up and down?
The other thing you can do, what's the difference you need?
No, he's saying use the tool five plus the 15 would get us right to 220 instead of-
We need 50,000 dollars.
Or you could do a partial reduction in the health. You could do like a point-two in health.
What would your recommendation be?
Mine would be to do a point-two in health. Yeah, that's what I would think.
Because you know, as Jody said, you know, the health cut is only for like two years because then you're going to have to, we're going to have to increase health again in two years, so-
The safer bet would be to do point-two in health, which would be the same as the point-two in PE essentially.
Yeah.
Jody, point-two?
Yeah, point-two in health.
Just a second, let me just show that.
And then the dollar amount would be the same as the PE 14, 140.
Yeah, so, we felt that, not quite.
Yeah, it's close.
Now, let me just check the numbers. 3.59 at 1.750, you'd have roughly about 220 to reduce, and 220 would put you about through four items.
If we go to 3.60, where does it get us?
Will that give us our whole health back?
Is that what you're asking?
Oh, no.
No, I just want to see how close we can get to that number.
3.60, it would take three, I think roughly about 3.262, which would be the closest, let's do 3.61. 3.61, that will put us at 208. 208 would mean we'd go right through here, and we would have to find probably about $5,000.
I think, Jody, that point-two health will cover the students for next year.
Yes.
I like the 2.59 myself.
2.3.
Yeah, sure, everyone loves that one. Yeah, 2.59.
Actually, I think Jody would probably like less, but-
So, we in agreement with that? Stick it to 3.59?
I guess I would ask, and Jody, and I don't know, Kathy, are there any other cuts here that you see that we could do that the board has not taken action on that we, we could still be okay and therefore use less of the fund balance?
Say it, I'm sorry, I was thinking-
Are there additional cuts that the board is not considering at this time that you think we could go with and not impact the programs?
To use $250,000 less than fund balance, we'd put you right in this range. Everything above that.
We understand that.
What is your recommendation? Do you think we can go there?
That was their recommendation to begin with, but we didn't want to cut that much program.
So, yes, it must be true.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, in my department, it's the social work position. Everything, every one of us is done. We don't think it's a great thing to do, but it's managed. Because I would cover all mandated students. It's the excess students that you need somebody to talk to on a short-term basis that might have to be-
We may have to offer groups instead of individual sessions for unmandated. For mandated, it still is individual.
I kind of made a mental shift from 1.5 to 1.75. So, I can always go back, but it's sort of like, we took that vote, we made that shift.
It's getting late.
Well, that, but we did, we kind of what we all wanted.
Why don't we open it up to public comment with both 3.59 and 1.75?
No, we haven't decided anything.
But I made the mental shift.
Okay, so, at this point in time, I think the board has decided tentatively, before we hear public comment, that we are going to go take the 1,700.
You still have to change to 2.59.
Well, that's what I wanted to know. I just want to make sure these are all right.
3.59 and taking 1,700, 500, or whatever it's, yeah, 1.75 out of the fund balance.
That would put us at 220, roughly 220, 222. It would restore about point-three of health to make that go a little easier. It would be everything here, and if that's where the board is right now, and you believe that we would consider a resolution, Judy would have to take some time.
Okay, we're, we're thinking about that. It's tentative. I want to open up to public comment before we-
If I can ask Judy, start working on that, no matter what, we can always change it, but that way at least you have it.
Okay, we're opening it up. Yeah, just come on.
Here, you can use this one if you want.
Oh, good one.
Just remember to state your name for the camera. Smile nice.
Tom, Tom, are we also doing the bus proposition tonight?
You already did the bus proposition.
Oh, we did. Oh, right.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Casido. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Allison Goldsmith, and I'm a sophomore, and we're editors of the B.C. Towne newspaper, and we just found out yesterday that the Towne might be cut, and we just wanted to tell you why we think it's important and why we should keep it.
Wait, has that been cut?
No.
No, they said that it was for the Talon, point two oh.
I think we might be number thirty, I think we're in number thirty.
Oh, so it's not being cut?
Like definitely or like?
Definitely, not being cut.
We made somebody happy, we made them laugh the whole time, Mike was bad.
Good evening, my name is Peter Keen, I'm a parent of two children in a school district. I'm not very familiar with this process, it's more complicated than I thought. So, I can sympathize with all you, all you folks and the difficult job you have to do here. I do have some questions. I don't know what the demographics look like over the next several years. Has, has there been an analysis of that? Do you project a declining enrollment? How specific, how accurate can you be in doing that? And do these numbers reflect that?
In our budget. In our budget presentation, probably, I think, two weeks ago or at the very beginning of it, we do an enrollment projection each year. Right now, the district is roughly on line to lose a hundred to a hundred and thirty students just next year. That most likely is continuing as a trend over the next three to four years, which we're hoping to see some type of bottoming out. Now, that is based on the district's three-year, six-year and eight-year projection that has been pretty consistent, very close, within twenty to forty students over its historical perspective. I inherited it, but you tweak it a little, there has been no census done. However, during that same time, housing has been declining here. Last year, we finally saw an uptick on it. We know that housing starts for new houses in the areas up over three hundred percent, that's from eight houses built up to thirty-two. We just don't know exactly where it's going to be, but right now, it's trending in a negative.
It seems some of that housing is also for older folks.
The, what I'm, what I'm quoting is just single family.
I'm just wondering whether those were taken into account when you say, can we make cuts in a different class or whatever? You've projected fewer students in the class. So, those are incorporated into these numbers.
That gets incorporated into our budget, yes.
Okay. There was a slide, well, you know, when I went on the website today, there was this list, I think it says it is not in priority order.
Well, that was the list that we put up for public at the last meeting, this.
It was on there at four o'clock this afternoon, so.
It was, it was on there before that, but we also put up-
I said, well, one that was on at four o'clock this afternoon said it's not in the priority order.
Yeah, I would have to check, Bill?
Okay.
Did it look just like this?
I don't know if it did or not, I didn't, I didn't look at it that way because it said it wasn't in priority.
Okay.
So. There was another slide or there's a material on the website that compared the athletic budgets between the various school districts. Do you have that?
Not with me tonight, no.
It shows Bethlehem's about in the middle with Shenandoah being the largest, about a million, ours has showed about five hundred thousand roughly across. It didn't say per student. So, I mean, there wasn't a lot of data on it that you could tell that, but I suggest, it doesn't appear that our athletic budget is wildly out of, you know, proportion as it currently is. As a matter of fact, it suggests, you know, among across the schools, I think it was between, you know, Burn Hills, Shaker, Shenandoah, all those, it was right in the middle. So, we're not in a situation where, I have a concern about the sports being cut. I agree with Ms. Navarro over here, her comments on how important it is. If you cut, you know, we're talking about not trying to shave things so that we're not cutting an entire group of students. This is an entire group of students, it's freshman sports. There's no team available for them to play. If you're in ninth grade, I don't see these kids going down to school, you can't make the teams bigger, put it that way. So, you're cutting roughly a quarter of the kids who currently participate, that's a hundred and fifty kids, something like that. So, that seems like a pretty severe cut to make where we're, I understand how difficult this is or I, I can appreciate it, put it that way, I'm trying to. In my view, that would seem to be a fairly blunt instrument to take to it, to cut that entire level out of the sports program. I played sports myself, many of you folks did, I'm sure, kids who don't play freshmen, many of them will not play again. Because you, you can say you can play outside, you can go play, I guess you could go play at the Y. It's not the same sort of development to do it in a competition where it's live, you're playing against other teams from other schools. It's an entirely different level of development that I think it'd have a enormous impact on, you know, the quality of sports programs going forward. Maybe they're overemphasized, I think sports are overemphasized in our society, but not at this level, though. At the pro level, yeah, maybe at the college level, but this, it's a, it's an aid to kids growing up that I don't think you're able to replace with something else. I should have been taking notes here and if somebody else wanted to talk, please interrupt me. Can I reserve another comment?
One more, so we can get everybody going.
And I, I did write a letter to the board expressing my opinion, my name is Kim Namcoon.
Thank you.
I'm a parent of three middle schoolers, have lobbied for all sorts of things to not have cut in the school district, gone to the state to lobby, you know, working towards not cutting our programs. But I had no idea until last week that this sports program level was even on the docket and I only know because of a meeting I was at with Dr. Douglas. I don't think the school community knows, especially not the priority of it. They have no idea and I think we're trying to do a transparent budget, we failed here. This has not been publicized, it's very hard to find this list on the website and when you do find it, athletics is not fear of number two. And I think once people do find out, they'll be very disappointed they didn't have an opportunity to speak to it. It is essential that we not cut that role. It will stop the growth and development of so many kids, they will be completely turned away from sports because of the hole we're leaving. They can't go down and play modified and still maintain their dignity, there's not room for them on the JV teams. And our school doesn't even have freshman sports except where they're essential because the community has built programs around certain very popular sports. And we've worked very hard as a community to make them available until they're in middle school. We don't do it any longer because the school was taking care of it after that. And you're changing the whole function of the community when you remove those freshman sports. Just about the tax levy, and I realize it's not just about the public opinion and what's gonna pass and what's not, but three point five nine or three point six four, both round to three point six, community doesn't care which one it is, if it's gonna make up that difference. I know you need a little cushion here and there, but just so you know, it really doesn't matter where you put it. I think that covers it, I mean, I did write the letter to the board, I tried to express it fairly, but I do think there's a lot of passion out there about this that we're missing here. And that's, that's the problem, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Good evening, I'm Tim Benetia, I'm the president of the B C A A and I'd like to divert us for just a second to a non-budget item. On the agenda tonight is the resignation of our athletic director, John Demeo, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank him for his many years of service to the district. These are very tough decisions, you have a thankless job, so let me start by thanking you for doing your job and making your contributions to our community. And at the risk of making your head hurt with just three more numbers, I'm gonna give you three more numbers. The first one is one point three percent. One point three percent represents the share of the district budget that goes toward athletics. One point three percent. The next number is five point nine percent. That represents the cut of seventy thousand dollars as a share of the athletic budget, five point nine percent. Now, I've done the last number a whole bunch of times as I've tried to follow the discussion here, so, you know, you, you may want to, if I could ask for just a little rounding error if I don't get it completely right. But the seventy thousand dollar cut would represent thirty-one point seven percent of the total cuts that we are now making. So, thirty-one point seven percent of the cuts are coming from one point three percent of the budget. And there's just seems to be, to me, an equity issue there and a proportionality issue and I totally understand the logic. If we run out of opponents, right, it doesn't make any sense, I totally get that. I think many of us in the room and in the community would feel a lot better about this if we actually knew that all these other schools were gonna cut, which we don't. We could cut later if they all did that and we would replace it now with something else, we would know we would have that money at our disposal if we needed it. And I think people would be a little more comfortable knowing that, hey, we have lit, we know, we're not just guessing. We don't have perfect information about what other districts are gonna do, so that's my thirty seconds, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Hi, everyone, I'm Mandy Fallon, I'm a parent of a middle schooler and a Hemigrel fifth grader. Couple of comments, first of all, the, the budget item for two hundred thousand for the, at some point, the regents will eventually do the computer-based testing mandate that you're anticipating. And I know they did a memo, a memo into the schools suggesting you plan for it. Just curious, what are other school districts in the area doing? Are they planning for it or they?
Some are, some are not. Some have actively, actively, like I can say, just because a friend of mine is the superintendent at South Colony, they wrote a letter saying that no matter what, under any circumstance, they're in financial crisis, they will not be able to. The problem is, is that the letter that memos came out said you will prepare for it, which means I, as an administrator, must comply with a state directive.
Is, and I'm just curious, I was chatting with some folks in my area in, in the back there and wondering if there were other resources. And I, and I, maybe there aren't at the high school level because the, clearly the high school students aren't gonna be taking the four through eight testing. If there's any way to share computer equipment or whatnot to maybe lessen the blow for Bethlehem as you prepare for this in a few years. Just kind of looking for options, especially because you said that the infrastructure is in the bond that was just passed.
The majority of the infrastructure is in the bond and that is probably our only savings grace is that that happened sort of coincidentally. The equipment side, we don't understand how other districts will be able to deal with the infrastructure piece without a bond. There are other districts now preparing a bond to go forward because of these issues.
Okay. I, I mean, I just was pointing that out because, you know, maybe there would be some money there to, you know.
Roughly so that I can share with the audience, the state memo and directive is that five percent of our budget should be utilized for online assessment and we should prepare. Five percent of our budget is four point something million dollars. We are just starting a little pocket, I mean, but the assistance of the bond will hopefully help offset that. The more prepared we are, hopefully, the more we can, we can also deal with the new issues for our staff, our community and our students as they sort of experience a new testing format.
Okay, no, I was just, I mean, it was just one of those things I was curious about. And the other is more of a comment, listening to you all and I, and I do, I thank you because it is, it's a very hard job that you have and I understand that. But after listening last year, and I, I haven't been to many this year, sorry, but last year, and it seemed like piercing the cap was just, just gonna happen. Yet now you're quibbling over how low you're gonna go under the cap, this just seems interesting to me, like why you question it mainly because in just taking back and looking at what happened last year, the Bethlehem community supported the budget with the cap increase. They did the supermajority, so I just thought that was interesting. One of the other comments I had, oh, what was it? I don't know what that was. Anyway, just, it was just a thought or just a comment about that. Finally, I just wanted to mention, one of the things or two things that were talked about being cut last year that didn't get cut were the gymnastics and the Chinese for sixth graders. And I remember hearing, listening to appeals and whatnot and still they were cut. And then, lo and behold, September rolls around and my son's sixth grade friends are taking Chinese. So, I guess I'm, I'm unsure, so now I'm listening to parents who are very upset about freshman sports being cut, yet gymnastics, I don't believe was cut, Chinese wasn't cut. So, what, what's, what's gonna happen here? Is this, is this a real cut or is this, you know, you're just scaring people? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Gymnastics is self-funding.
Oh, so they went to self-funded Chinese?
Oh, fifty percent.
They moved to fifty percent self-funded, yes.
Okay, that answered the question, thank you.
Chinese was restored.
Chinese was restored.
After.
Well, no.
Right, after the initial discussion, a couple of board members had reservations feeling that that made Bethlehem a different program.
So, then it was restored to the final one, okay.
And parents came forward in.
Okay, no, because I recall those meetings and that's why I thought, oh, this is interesting.
Yeah.
So, then, and then gymnastics went the way of hockey, which is self-funding. All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Gaffney, I have a kindergarten and a three-year-old. It's hard on the sports piece. If that goes back in, we don't know what would be taken out and all I would say is I was very taken aback by the comment here that on the social work piece, that kids that need someone to talk to wouldn't have a place to go. And I think that mental health needs to be considered as well as physical health and I agree with Dr. Navarro that it's a very important part. I played in sports as well, but I just would like the board to consider mental health in addition to physical health.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Frambo Gardas and I have two children in our school district. And I'm here to offer a suggestion on the athletic program because I also am in favor of it. I was wondering if it was possible to include those dollars back into the budget, if you would reconsider it and leave those dollars there. And as the suburban council and athletic directors decide what they're going to do with their freshman program, we would have those dollars there to be able to participate as we have in the past. I mean, because I think it's a great program for our kids. And as a person who works in the health profession, I can't tell you that with obesity among young children and what we have to do to help those kids, this is a great outlet for our kids. I mean, mental health, we've talked about that, physical health is important too and we know these kids do great in school. I really believe we need to keep this program and I hope you will reconsider, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Mike Welton, I have a eighth grader and a tenth grader. And the eighth grader, you know, he lives and breathes sports, that's what makes him happy to go to school. Question I have is what is the seventy thousand dollars? What's that actual cost?
That's.
The seventy?
I believe.
That I see up there.
I believe it's on the west.
Is it transportation?
Well, it's transportation, salary, benefits, officials, supervision, athletic fees and sectional fees.
So, it's not just bus drivers?
No.
Okay. The next question I have is since fourth grade, my son has had an opportunity to play Little League at a competitive level, he's had an opportunity to play basketball, travel. But once you get to ninth grade, that's no longer there anymore, there's no club sports. So, once ninth grade is gone, he's gone. He's not gonna be playing sports at a competitive level at school. And that's scary to me, it's scary to him.
May, may I pose a question? Why would, he would still have the opportunity, I mean, that's one of the things.
If he's an exceptional athlete, right?
Remember, there are several programs across the state that ninth and tenth grade students play JV, even some nine, ten and eleven. And then ten, eleven, twelve tend to play varsity.
It's not gonna happen at this school. It's not gonna happen at this school.
No, I mean, I, I'm just posing the question because I, I can't rule out that every child would be.
Right.
Would be eliminated from this as well, out of the hundred and seventy. I'm not debating, I'm just answering the question.
Where is the decision on freshman versus modified? Where those opportunities seem to exist?
Yeah. I, I think, I don't know if you want to answer that better, John, but I know that there, he's been going to the suburban council meetings and across the board, the A D directors have. he's been going to the suburban council meetings and across the board, the AD directors have districts would prefer that they're ahead of making the cut.
So if they're all cutting the freshmen, it'd be crazy to have, you know, a freshman team and not a modified.
That's sort of what this chart shows, actually.
It's like this chart, and, you know, with this chart, there's one, like, burnt hills. They, they have committed that they're reducing one level. We just don't know what level it is. We would probably make the assumption that from the ADs making that recommendation, and most likely from the chart, a majority of teams already being, starting to be reduced at the freshmen, that most likely their coaches would probably follow suit. In this situation, we're asking our AD to talk to our coaches to make that choice. If we had to, where would it be? That way, they have a developmental part of their program, an intermediate part of the program, and a competition part of the program. That's, that's, I think, been always the model. And where you do have the ability, you put in that freshman level. The hard part is, after four years, that's starting to strain, and you can see it from the chart. That's what's happening in the variety of districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Does that, any of those comments help change anything, or?
Could I ask one more question? I apologize.
I did tell you you could have one more, didn't I?
Well, I don't know if he did.
A quick one, please.
I don't know what the process is here, what you folks are expecting to do tonight. There was a woman talked before who was questioning whether, I mean, I know you have to, you have a thankless job, the community would be very interested in what you decide. There's a question of whether they know what's on the agenda here and what you have up at the top of the list. So, if your process allows, I would ask you to not make that decision tonight, if that was your plan. And we'll see how many people are here next week.
Thank you. Okay, Lynn, you had a question?
Well, several questions, just one, is I have a comment.
Sure.
For the last several years, we've been making cuts, and so that no one area was kind of treated indiscriminately, or discriminally, I should say. We try, you know, all departments had to look at places that they could cut. And so, over the last couple of years, we've got faculty and staff, O and M, transportation. And, you know, when it comes to sports, it's always very difficult to find a place to make cuts, because you can't.
Because it's such a small part of the budget?
No, not because it's a small part of the budget. It's very difficult to cut, because either you have to cut a sport, and which one would you propose that we cut, okay? You can't cut, you know, we've already cut back on equipment and whatever, and the boosters have been great with supporting the sports. And we tried cutting individual sports, a few individual sports that were small, saying that because they were smaller, you know, they're more expensive. Whether that's really fair or equitable is questionable, too. So, you know, so over the years, actually, there's been, we've cut more in the other areas than we have cut in sports. So, we've, you know, so, now, this is not a back and forth, I'm just, I'm just, I just want you to understand, because you, you said you were new to the area.
I'm not new to the area.
So we've cut, we've cut all these areas.
About 15.
And especially in faculty and staff. And we, you know, at some point, at some point when we need to make cuts, sometimes it may seem disproportionate to you, but actually, in the bigger scheme of things, it really isn't.
Because it's such a big hit, and it's proportionate to the amount of budget. You're talking about four levels. You've taken one level out, that's a quarter of that. That's 150 hits.
We know that.
Yeah. If I can try to also offer something to Lynn, just as a clarification, and I think it helpful. First of all, I can't say it's necessarily a quarter, because it's, I believe on my charts it's about seven, seven programs, and not every program has a freshman program. So, but it's, it's relatively, probably 10, 15% so far, if you do some of it. I won't argue with the numbers. But I think what Ms. Lenhart was trying to say, and I think you emphasized as well, as I think Tim mentioned, is it's about 1.3% of the budget. Over the past five years, how much has been reduced of that budget, of that 1.3? Very little, because of difficulties having them. But over that same time, I would say, and I'm not a whiz on this, but I'll ask Judy if she takes her eyes up, we've probably cut, before I came here and when I've been here, almost $10 to $12 million out of a budget, which is about 120 staff members, which has sort of had its ripple effects. So, that proportionally, when you take that 1.3 and 5% or 31% of the cut, if you really look at it, you've got to look at it on the global scale, I believe, because you have to bring in all those cuts that have been reduced. That's the issue, that we look at it in a microcosm of just one time and place, where we're dealing with it over the whole period of reduction. That's the difficulty. I can tell you, there's not a single board member here that wants to cut. There's not a single administrator that wants to recommend it. But no matter what, we're the only public agency that A, goes out to vote, and B, must have a ballot, but balanced budget. We wish everybody did. And what I would say in regards to this board putting it up there, it may not have been up there in priority, but we moved athletics to the very first budget presentation. It has been always number two on the list that this board has had up in public on every presentation. It has been talked about at four budget presentations plus tonight. It has been talked about in our meetings, it's been talked about out there. Is this a reality? We've said no.
Has it been in the newspaper?
We don't control the newspaper, but the newspaper.
You know what, we're going to stop at this point, so we can finish up.
The 4% is the maximum reserve you can keep? That's by state law?
Yeah.
And why do they limit it at that?
Well, you want to go, yeah.
Because you didn't want to keep increasing your property taxes, where.
This is a meeting of the board.
So.
I'll be happy to discuss that with the outside with no problem. I mean, that's, I'd be more than glad to give you the information.
All right.
I'm not wanting to get more involved, but I'm going to have.
We're going to stop right now. What do we need, what is the next process? Do we need a motion on a resolution? Do we need? No, I think what I'd like to do is just kind of get a couple of little clarifications of the board to make sure, because a couple of comments that were brought up. One is, none of us have the desire, well, at this point, I don't think anybody has the desire to challenge the tax cap. Is that correct? Because that was brought up. And I know we talked about that last year, we're only going to try and do that once. We didn't want to do that, and I just want to make sure we're all in agreement that.
Right, we appreciate the committee's, I mean, the community's support on that, but.
Right, but we didn't want to try and do it twice.
And we just, we just did a bond issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure that. The other question I wanted to just kind of bring up there, too, is, when did the list come out that was prioritized?
Normally, the prioritized list would not come out until the board has reviewed it. It's a board document beforehand.
We've done it at the end, that's when we see them all together.
Yeah, and that's what we did last year. It's what the presentations have.
We didn't have the tiers up for four weeks, with one, two, three, and four in order?
But the whole list wasn't up on the website?
Yeah, no, the tier list was.
It's okay, keep going.
I do, I do have some additional information, though. I counted, because people were saying of 25%. It's actually of the 31 fall teams, five teams would be cut. Of the 24 winter teams, three would be cut. Possibly, I mean, I'm just saying of a proposal. And out of the 20 spring teams, three would be cut. So I basically counted the total number and then took off.
So 16 teams. Okay, and then the other thing I want to ask, too, all right, so people are okay with that, that feel we are transparent enough? Yes?
I don't think the list, the list was not on the website. I couldn't find it when people asked me on Monday.
It was on our budget website. Unfortunately, we're trying to clean that up, but the, the tier list was there.
Okay.
I know, but even the one he showed at the end of the, I couldn't find it either. When my friends asked for it, I could, I honestly couldn't find it on there. There was no article about the budget cuts like there normally is.
No, I believe it's under the budget on time.
I'm just trying to see if the physical education part of it, the sports, was on a priority, so people kind of knew that was one of the first to go.
It's been on every presentation. It's been on our priority list that we put up at the very last presentation as well, because we did keep them in order that they were presented, I believe. Like, athletics went first, and then we had O and M, and then we had some.
On the website, it says they're not in priority.
Well, no, that's what I'm talking about, the tier.
But you're saying people kind of knew it was up on the thing. All right, and then the other question I have is, because it looks like we definitely have, and nobody's changed their mind, right? At this point? Well, that's why we should, that's why I was asking what the next step is. If we need a motion, then you'll find that out. I mean, we can have a discussion after the motion, but you should have a motion on the floor. No, I know, I guess before I do that, I was going to kind of, if it was still kind of four people are adamant, kind of go back to Mike's thing about even if it could be part of paying the 50%. I don't know. You know, what Mike originally brought up is maybe freshman sports, if they wanted to do it, could at least have the option to pay. But can we do that after?
Pay for fundraiser.
Or fundraiser, right.
Fundraising, not pay.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't, it's not legal.
So where do we go? We need a motion? I don't know, that's what I was asking, what's the process? Do we need a motion on a resolution, or what is the process?
For like the rate of the fund bill.
Well, we'd be adopting a budget of a certain amount of money.
If you're prepared to adopt the budget, you need a motion. So, that's the board's call, whether you feel you're prepared to do that. I do have the figures based on the decisions that have been made.
The only question is, do you wish to alter any of the decisions you made before the public comment, just in consensus?
Right, and I'm agreeing now.
Versus now? That's one question. Or do you wish to not do it tonight and go to another? That's, that's, you only have one night left, which is April 26.
Just next Tuesday? Okay, so I guess what I need to know is how many people feel comfortable adopting it tonight? Or how many people want to go back and, for a week, to kind of sit on it for a week? Can I ask? I, I cannot make the meeting next week, so I would ask that, if we could, that I would prefer to do it this week, because I will not be able to vote then next week. I'm okay with, well, I don't want to make decisions because somebody can't be here. I want to make decisions because we're ready to do it. That's all.
I don't agree, but I'm not, you're not going to need my vote, and it's going to go without me, I'm not going to vote for it.
You're ready to make a decision?
You can vote against the budget?
Everybody makes a decision tonight.
Well, no, but we will be, we'll be voting for the budget.
Okay. Lynn, what was, you wanted to make it tonight? Or, because I have no problem really waiting till next Tuesday to sit on all this.
Well, we could, but I mean, I'm, but I'm ready tonight.
But you want to do it tonight? Okay, so it's one, two, three, four. Okay, so we'll do it tonight, so. We need a motion, then. Does the motion have to include the tax levy amount and everything? Do you have all that?
The, yeah. The motion would be to approve the budget at the expenditure amount of $90,415,000 for the 2013-14 school year.
If I could ask that Judy reads any motion, word for word into the record, and then it would be up to the board to decide to adopt that motion.
I was just going to say, so move to Judy's.
I would be very specific on the wording.
I thought she just did.
Could you repeat the number?
Let me just repeat that, so it would be an action item where it was, okay. The motion is to consider adoption of the 2013-14 school budget of the Bethlehem Central School District in the amount of $90,415,000 to be presented to voters at the annual meeting on May 21, 2013, at the high school.
Someone?
Second.
Hey, any discussion?
I guess I would just say, I wish we had considered changing and lowering the sports to a different level. Again, I think we could have kept the academic program intact with different choices.
I would agree with that, too, Matt. Anybody else? All in favor? Any opposed?
Carrie. Do you oppose this part, or just the total? Like, what's going to get cut?
We're proposing this whole thing.
That the sports go?
The sports are gone.
I disagree.
I would take a roll call vote.
I think we have 6-1.
Okay, no abstention.
No abstention, right?
And that's the budget?
The budget is the spending plan.
We just postponed the motion.
Yeah, it's the whole spending plan for the whole district.
You should have put.
I'm sorry, I'm going to say.
The budget amount of $90,415,000 includes $221,000 of reductions, which takes you through number four, what Dr. Douglas is highlighting.
Right now, you are. You don't want to hear this, it's important to people here, okay? I know you're not a fan of the sports program.
All right, you know what, we're not going to, we can't do that right now, I know.
I understand.
I, I understand. Okay, what do we do next?
Does the board, we also need to take action before next week to adopt the property tax report card as well. So, that's your option, you can do that this evening as well. Or, Sal, do you have that to put up?
Yes.
So that the board can see that? And actually, I can give you, I have a hard copy as well, the board and the community. The property tax report card is a formal document that is required to be adopted by school boards each year, and then it gets submitted to the state. The information that is included on this form is a comparative form, so it shows what's in the budget for the 2012-13 school year, and then also what is included in the proposed budget. So, under the line for what is included in the total proposed spending, that number would be the $90,415,000. That would be appearing on that line, it's in column B in the middle. Do you have a cursor going there for me, Sal? Where Sal is hovering around would be the $90,415,000. The school tax levy would be the amount that includes the 3.59% increase, so the levy amount would be $61,358,000. And then, what that will show is, when you extend those numbers down, that difference is basically indicating whether you have exceeded the calculated property tax cap or not. The 5.99 represents the amount that we exceeded by last year. That's going to be a negative number, because you're going slightly below the cap. And the form also, in fact, I can give you a quick calculation on that, to give you those figures. Yeah, I will update it based on these manual figures that you're looking at right now. So that proposed tax levy line, not counting those permissible exclusions figure, would And then the difference between that and the 56, 367, 644, represents the amount that you would be below the property tax cap, which is $28,059.
And we have to adopt this tonight as well?
You don't have to adopt it tonight, you could adopt it. It has to be adopted by next week, so that we can get it submitted to the state on time.
Hey, can I ask, is it possible to adopt this tonight with the limit that, do you check all the numbers later?
One of, one of the issues is, within 24 hours, it must be approved, and it should be accurate at the time of the adoption.
Okay.
So what do you say?
If you feel, I mean, we're, we would need, I would ask, if you're taking a motion, I'm going to ask Judy, give us 10 minutes so that she can go through and.
Well, see, that's what I, that's why I was wondering, because.
So take a 10-minute break.
Or can we adopt it? We have to give the both these.
Or you can, or you can adopt it on the 23rd with a morning meeting.
Go through the rest of the agenda and let her do this.
Yes.
And see.
Yeah. Is there anything else we have to do besides this?
Judy?
Oh, no, for the budget. Oh, no, for the budget.
I don't even know where my agenda is.
Finance.
Okay, probably can whip through all this, right?
That was part of the legal notice that was adopted.
Check the minutes.
I didn't see it in the minutes.
It was included within the resolution that was approving the legal notice, because that had...
Oh.
Because I thought I saw it in there, one of those two authorized the purchase of the buses.
But it's saying that we approved what we approved.
Okay.
March 6th.
I'm just finishing up the agenda.
And it was March 6th, Matt. Michelle has prompted me, that we had done back when we had done, yeah.
Okay, I lost.
The finance, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance, finance action items A through G.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just, you know, thank yous to both the boosters and, and both of those donations under D and E, you know, for their contributions, it's great.
And also, just to note that it is the approving contract with Ashley McGraw or Alcatx.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff act items A through J.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't have time to thank Mr. DeMeo as well as everyone.
Thank you, Lynn. Right, did he leave? I thought, thought I'd go out. But we can still thank him. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through I.
So moved.
So, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, correspondence action item A through E.
So moved.
Any discussion? Oh, Lynn? Let's see, the Bethlehem Central School Board of Education, I'm Nate's Lynn Lenhart, as Area 7 Representative of Dispass Board of Directors, term beginning January 1st, 2014, and ending December 31st, 2015. Congratulations again, Lynn.
Well, I need, I need, I need other districts to...
We gotta move first.
Can I just say that the school calendar's on there, so if we approve this, then it should be, you know when it'll be online?
We'll be posting it.
Posting it soon?
Because people want to know.
Yeah, we've received many calls already for next year's vacations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Now, I can congratulate you. And then, recognition, visitors on the non-agenda item. So, future meetings, did we decide to change that to 7:00 AM for the Bocees meeting?
You are able to do that at 7:00 AM, I think that also may fit into your schedule.
Yeah, I just have to tell them that.
Yeah, that will, just so that the public knows, that will be to approve the Bocees budget, administrative budget portion, which is required by that day. It's a real quick, there won't, I do not believe there will be any other action except that, and the only other thing that could potentially be there would be the report card.
And that'll be in the conference room?
That would be in the conference room.
10-minute meeting?
It would play.
Do we really have to do it at 7:00, or can we do it a little bit later?
You can actually set any time.
What time works with your schedule?
I have to leave by 7:20.
Let's keep it at 7:00.
But, you know...
I'm here.
Sorry, guys. I'll bring this today.
No, just 7:00.
And then, we have, sorry, Wednesday, May 8th, regular board meeting. Tuesday, May 21st, we have the budget vote. And May 22nd, regular board meeting.
Diane, I would suggest we just note that the main meetings are the 2nd and 4th. Wednesdays, we usually meet the 1st and the 3rd, but it's a difference, so we want to make sure we put that out on the website and make sure everybody's aware of that, especially the PIG students who, you know, will be needing to come to.
Maybe tell the teach, I don't know if you can tell the teachers, too.
That is, already, I have checked, that is on our board meeting date calendar, which is a PDF as well. And that is also to meet the statutory requirements of having a public hearing within so many days, but not be, not, no later than so many days, and not before so many days to the annual election. And the 8th is when it would fall. So, literally, the board would have to have one on the first week, the second week, the third week, and then potentially right the day after the budget vote, so that's why we adjusted it.
Diane, just, since we changed that one to 7:00 AM, I don't know if you want to have administration tell the PIG teachers that there is an evening meeting next Tuesday also, or something?
Yeah, because you can do that on the morning announcements, too, right? Scott can do that?
We don't even have to do it the morning announcements, I'm sure Jody will have it done in about five minutes.
Scott's still here.
Scott's already here, too, so.
Okay. And we have no need to go in an executive session?
We still have to vote on that.
Property tax report card? Okay. So, we, we, Sal, can you go back to the form, please? Okay. So, we reviewed the total proposed spending, and we got down to the difference, which is the negative 28,059, showing that we're below the tax cap. We're now looking at the fund balance estimates. Can you scroll down just a teeny bit? Thank you. So, we have to break out the projected fund balance into three separate components, and based on the slide that we had reviewed earlier with the current projections that we were going, this was on slide number 22, where we expected that we would be around 8,278,000 dollars. What we would use for our estimates is the adjusted restricted fund balance would be 2,880,000. The assigned appropriated fund balance is 1,850,000. That represents the 1,750 that you have authorized as the planned use of fund balance, plus an estimated 100,000 dollars in outstanding encumbrances as of the end of the year. Those two lines together get combined to make that 1,850,000 dollars. And then, the balance would be your unrestricted fund balance, and that would be about 3,550,000. And that would be at 3.93 percent, which would be below the 4 percent. So, again, these are estimated numbers. We'll be submitting actuals once we close out.
Can I ask a question? So, when you, when you calculate that, what is that supposed to be? At those amounts as of July 1, 2013?
It's as of July 1, going into July 1, 2013. So, these numbers that are listed as actual 2012-13 are for July 1st, 20... The column D?
Yeah.
Those numbers represent the July 1st, 2012 numbers. So, it's kind of a, wouldn't have been the header I would chose, choose on the form, but that's the way it's set up.
So, in essence, the numbers you've calculated here are the actual numbers that we would have to file under the state report card requirement. If by chance you find that there was an error, we would know that between now and your report to the State Education Department, and you could correct it at the 23rd meeting as well.
Yes, if we needed to.
The 7:00 AM one?
Right.
So, we would need a motion and a second, and then a vote to consider approving the property tax report card reflecting the numbers that I had just given to you for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Can I say no before?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
She's voting against.
Because it's an informational return?
You're not, you know, it's not...
So, what's your vote, Kate?
I approve the numbers.
Okay. So, all right, so that's seven approved.
Diane, can I just ask, just for the record, if the administration can look into using the .22 of the fund balance from this year and report back to us on, I don't know, would be next week, but at some future meeting in the next couple of weeks, as to what we could do with that to use it for some early expenditures or something?
Yeah, I would say give us probably about four weeks as we get going, just because you need to firm up that number as we get closer to the end of the year. Plus, look at what those potential options could be.
Yep, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we get that on the record, that you're reporting back to us.
Yeah, we'll do that, let's schedule that for like, I think, the 22nd.
I did have one other question, you know, and I know it was up there as a level two, but the part where having, with the sports, cutting a PE so students can opt out of the sports, can we still do that without the savings?
That, that would be, I mean, we would recommend to the district that we consider doing it. The reason being is, it's much safer to have our staffing in place, offer it, see what the implications are, and that provides us with a potential tool next year. The biggest thing that it helps, if anything, right now, I believe, is it would potentially reduce some class size.
We had talked about it, I spoke to Mr. Powers and Mr. Landry about it, and, you know, it's kind of an unknown as to how many kids will take advantage of it, because some kids, I think, now said, well, you know, that might lower my GPA.
Right, right. Not my daughter.
So, one of the things we thought about starting with is, starting with looking at the seniors. They have more flexibility in their schedule, and looking at the kids also, not just in sports teams, but also the kids who do outside, you know, gymnastics, that's, that's quite rigorous, to make it fair and see how many of those kids might take advantage of it would give us... But, plus, the senior year, it's fairly guaranteed that they, if they've been on two sports, they probably would continue it. Where you get into the lower levels, it's a little bit more of an unknown, if you can guarantee that or not, so...
And this gets us a phase-in period, too, the first half of the year, seniors. Then, we can look at it, evaluate, second half, juniors. And then, we can evaluate, and then, again, we can consider the options for the next year.
Right, yeah, because I've always looked at that, not even as a budget savings, but I know students have asked to do that, because some students want to take extra electives, because they are in sports, so you set time.
It will require some policy work on our part, just because we'll have to develop some pilot regulations.
Okay. I think that's it. Anybody else? Your second? All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting's over. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.